Study sessions. So the first study session is the I-494 update corridor update. And I'll just pass it to the city manager Rodriguez to take it from here.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have about a half hour for our first presentation from MINDOT. Thank you for coming out again. Feel like we need to get regular name text.
Right.
They're going to talk about their engagement process and then their rationale for advancing options on the I-494 project. It's an information update, so it's your chance for questions and comments. We do have a work session scheduled to present the business impact study, and that'll be later in July. And then we expect MINDOT to ask for municipal consent later this year. Following that, we have the Director Markle will be presenting on the organics task force report and their recommendations. And then staff also have recommendations, and they'll be talking about the pilot drop-off recycling program. Staff have a pretty detailed recommendation, draft recommendation, but we did that because it's a lot of information. And so tonight, again, is your chance to ask questions, present concerns, suggest new ideas. And then we'll be bringing a final recommendation for your consideration at our next meeting on June 11. And before I hand it over to Director Asher, because I don't know if I'll have a chance to speak again, but for our first presentation, I do want to thank the task force for their excellent work. And I don't know how many of them are here. But anyway, so Director Asher?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Just a brief introduction. Andrew Latoya is the project manager, and Amber Blanchard is with, they're both from MINDOT, so project director. They're going to go through their phase one and what's coming up in phase two, right? And so I'll just let them start.
All right. That is correct. So knowing that we have 30 minutes, I might rush through some slides, but I'll try to hit at least the key highlights that were involved in the phase one. We call it the fatal flow screening of alternatives that the project has gone through. For the agenda, at least, I would say what is included in the packets that you have, we were going to talk through the city goals that with interaction with city staff and other member cities on the corridor, we have heard what their priorities they would want to see from the project. Briefly talk through the project overview and the fatal flow analysis, then the phase two, which is the operations analysis that we are moving into. Being that it's a work session, would be very helpful for the project team to hear from city council and the city staff on how we are doing and any suggestions on how we should meet your expectations moving forward. So I'll go through, I'll probably, I'll talk through the city goals and the fatal flow screening. And the project director, Amber Blanchard, will address part of the fatal flow on the accessory configuration. So our interpretation of the city member goals that we have heard from at the moment, we are categorizing them into three. One being the regional transportation needs, second being local transportation needs, and the third, the local economic vitality of our project and its impacts to the community. So how each of these goals is addressed, at least the ones that we have addressed so far, I'll try to hint on as I go through my presentation. So for the 494 project, being that it's my, I think it's the third time that I'm coming back at the city, we grouped the solutions on the corridor in two, three buckets, we'll call it. Some were mainline, mainline alternatives or mainline improvements that would address the regional transportation goals and some of the local goals. The 35W 494 interchange was another category, and the third was the accessory configuration. So to date, project started in earnest in March of 2018. What we have been able to accomplish to date is narrow down the number of alternatives that we've solicited and also suggested as solutions to the corridor problem. I should step back a little bit and mention that what we had from the public on what they wanted to see on the corridor was to improve congestion, improve congestion by reducing the amount of time it takes somebody to traverse the corridor from one end to the other. Also, to improve safety by reducing the number of crashes that are just on the corridor. The third piece was address any deficient assets that are out there on the corridor, including pavement and bridge, or any storm sewer or hydraulic deficiencies that are existing on the corridor. And we know that they're out there right now. The secondary, I would say, secondary needs or goals that are also equally important is that our corridor should improve community connectivity by promoting bike and pedestrian accommodations across the 494 corridor. So in each of the three categories that I highlighted earlier, for mainline, we initially were looking at five alternatives, one being the no build, so meaning that we don't do anything out there on the corridor right now to improve any of the congestion. And this is continuing in phase two as a baseline, more like a baseline comparison option. The other alternatives that we looked at were doing a general purpose lane, adding a main pass lane, an HOV lane, and I'll call it an expressway. This would be separated from the general purpose lanes, I would say. I can describe what these are if, okay, I'm seeing noise, so I'll continue with that. All right. The other piece that we looked through in the fatal flow analysis was the access reconfiguration. Similarly, we looked at the no reconfiguration leaving existing conditions as is, looking at access, full access at Nicolet, access at Portland, or some sort of split access between Nicolet and Portland. The third bucket that I mentioned was the interchange reconstruction at 35W and 494. So for mainline, we compared all these alternatives on how well they were addressing the transportation need. The transportation need would be either improving mobility or how well they were improving mobility, how well they were addressing vehicle safety, how each of these alternatives was consistent with existing regional transportation plans developed by Met Council, approved by the Federal Highway Administration, and what the Department of Transportation also follows. Those regional policies or regional plans look at providing congestion-free options in the future, promoting transit advantage on the corridor, and also promoting HOV use on our corridor, because we feel the more person throughput we have on the corridor, the less congestion it will be. The last pieces, we also looked at how each of these were stacking up on socioeconomic and environmental impacts. So through that exercise, we are recommending moving forward with the general purpose lane as an option, and the main pass lane as the second alternative, that we are going to be diving into the detailed traffic operations analysis. Remember, I mentioned that the no build is going to continue being carried forward as a baseline option as well. So for the 35W 494 interchange, I should mention that back in 2017, the department received 70 million to build a northbound 35W ramp to westbound 494. There was quite a bit of work that was done in 2014 that looked at the vision of this interchange. So we are moving forward with that vision with a slight modification. And that, so what we are seeing here is what the 2014 vision was, and it showed bridges, or I would say braided ramps, this is 82nd, north of 82nd. Existing and forecasted traffic volumes are showing up to be a bit low or quite low at this location, that for efficiencies, purely project-based efficiencies, we are considering eliminating the ramps on the north side of 82nd. It's a better picture of that, where we'd be eliminating those, and then local traffic would be rerouted to either 76th or down at 82nd. So 76th to Penn or Lindell and 82nd. So we did go out and posed this question to the public. So as part of the public engagement effort that we did, it was both an online survey that was done plus an open house that was held on this topic. We had back from close to 1,500 people on this question, and 65% were in support of the access of eliminating the ramps at 82nd. The other questions, the other concerns that we had, and we are continuing to address as we develop the project further, is how traffic is going to be managed on the local system, construction impact as we are out there building, and construction impacts generally to the public, but also to the businesses, to the local businesses. So I'll pass it on to Amber.
Thanks, Andrew. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Happy to be here. So I'm going to talk about the access reconfiguration a little bit. You could see the reconfiguration area is in the solid purple box up there on the map. And we did traffic modeling to determine, using many of the criteria that Andrew had talked about for the mainline, to determine the reconfiguration options for, and which one would work the best for 12th Portland and Nicolet. So here you could see that there is a need for a look at the reconfiguration. The traffic operations and safety are degraded because of the close interchange spacing, and operations can be improved by taking a look at and looking at where the access would best fit. These are the three options that we looked at. We looked at a full access at Nicolet. We also looked at full access at Portland and had many different interchange options, which is going to be involved in the next step of the process. Right now, we're just looking at location. And we had a partial access at Nicolet and Portland, kind of a combined option there. What we're moving forward with is the full access at Portland, eliminating the full access at Nicolet and the partial access at Nicolet and Portland, and moving ahead with the full access at Portland, like I mentioned. We did do the public engagement similar to the mainline as well, and asked many questions about those people that lived and worked in the neighborhood, if they did or not, where they were located, whether they had property or business in the area, project area, and whether they had either lived or worked elsewhere and were doing something else in the project area. And again, just like Andrew mentioned, for the mainline, we had similar questions here regarding the freeway access. We wanted to know if the public supported different freeway access. And generally speaking, I think most people were actually in favor of that, as you can see with the 64% saying yes. And again, lots of concerns related to the similar concerns from the mainline regarding impacts to businesses, construction, merging, and the loss of access itself. So our next steps in the phase that we're in right now, we're entering, starting phase two. We're looking at the transportation, traffic analyses and running those for mainline on all of the mainline and the reconfiguration and the interchange as well, as kind of a whole system, taking a system-wide approach and looking at that. We're going to, we have a screening process for phase two as well. And then we're hoping to move into further reduction of those alternatives for each of the elements of the project regarding the mainline, the reconfiguration, and the interchange, and ultimately get down to a recommended alternative. And as you can see, our goal is to do that by August of this year. So we've got a lot of work to do here in the next couple of months. So with that, any questions from Andrew or I?
Questions from council members? I have a couple of questions. So when you looked at the different options for the 494, and you put a general purpose option in there, I was kind of confused about that. So looking at the socioeconomic and environmental impacts I heard were considered, but then, you know, I guess I'm not making the connection as to why that would be an option that would move ahead unless it was a minpass or an HOV versus just adding, I mean, that's just adding another lane, right? I feel like that would be counter to kind of what we'd want to do, or am I missing something? I was surprised that that was an option.
So one of the things, so the HOV versus the minpass, it kind of ended up being very similar results with the minpass coming out just ahead. And so with minpass, we can actually get more throughput in there with not just the two-person-plus crowd in the vehicles, but also those that are paying to have a more reliable commute. With the general purpose lane, it's something that we have to actually look at, because there's FHWA and ourselves through the environmental process, we need to vet as many reasonable alternatives as we can. And so general purpose lane did come up as one of the higher screened alternatives in that it actually performs fairly similar to the minpass lane because of the overall amount of throughput you're getting through in that lane.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And then another, this is more of just a statement, but, well, there's a question I have and then a statement. Again, just wanting to reinforce the importance of the underpass as a part of this regional project, and it looks like we will not be getting funding this year. And so again, for the city of Richfield, that is just a huge piece to making all of this work and move forward. And I know that we've been in discussions, and I've really appreciated your support on that. But I did want to reiterate that point as a part of this presentation and this discussion. And the last item, I wanted to ask, so in terms of your timeline, could we go back, I think it was the last, one of the last slides with the timeline. Okay, so are the study session on the economic impact, that's going to be, you said in July? Okay. So I just want to make sure that this is working in tandem and is not coming after, but is in the right part of the timeline? Yes, go ahead.
Will the MINDOT folks be at our study session about the economic impact? Or would the information be shared with them? Or how is this? Council members, Subal?
Yes, they're actually on the team. So when we meet with the consultant, they're meeting with us. And if they want to come to the work session, by all means, they're invited, so.
Any other questions from council members? Council member Whalen?
I think for me, one of the biggest sort of outstanding questions that I think we're still waiting on an answer to is the stormwater question, and that that could have a fairly big impact on what this project looks like and the impact it has on Richfield. Is that something that we would know by that July session? Or is that something that will get resolved separate from these pieces that we're working on now?
Yeah. Thank you for asking that question. We actually are looking at that in depth right now, and we have our consultant working on that and has been for many months. I think they're on the fourth option. And so that should be resolved hopefully by July, and we will probably be bringing some options to the council at some point here in the near future. But yes, absolutely, we're working towards that.
Thank you. Council member Subal?
Going back to the full access at Portland, you said there were five options. Are you looking at the economic impact, and the stormwater impact, or just how it fits in the right of way, or what factors are going to go into that decision?
I could take that. So thank you, Council member Subal. At the moment, the concepts that have been drawn looked at right of way, the footprint of each of these options. I mention a footprint because some had impacts in terms of closing some driveways, others were more of property impacts on the actual physical property. Once we have that, and in tandem with the business study that is being done, we shall be able to merge both those data points to help define the interchange that hopefully moves traffic the best, is bike and pedestrian friendly, and also is the least impactful to right of way.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So I would just make a note, when you go to the access reconfiguration need, and you have it defined from Lindell to 12th, I would actually define it from Lindell to 24th, because that underpass is key to that, the changes of those accesses.
Council member Whalen?
Coming back to the underpass question and the timeline, is it still, I mean, it has been, as I understand, the plan for decades for the underpass to come prior to the access reconfiguration. Is that still the plan? Or is that still kind of up in the air with the funding question?
I could probably answer that, and you guys can add if you feel. Council member Whalen, the underpass is scheduled for 2021, I think. The soonest any work would start is 2022. For you guys, 2023 on this?
Twenty, yes.
Yeah, okay. And the underpass needs to happen in 2021, because all the funding kind of happens at that time.
Yeah. Can I just piggyback on that a little bit more? Yeah, we understand the importance of the underpass and how local traffic will move during construction and that sort of thing. So we understand how important that is, and we agree that it does need to come first.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it. We will get you badges and name tags next time. Maybe we can find a shared cube. But thanks, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
The next item on our agenda is talking about our organics, our hearing from our organics task force and the recommendations that they have. And I will pass it on to Director Markle.
Happy retirement, Susan. Susan, happy retirement.
Yeah, congratulations.
Sent you a note. He sent you a note.
I bet you will not find anything to do with your time. Now you're going to be super bored, knowing you.
But listen, I'm free for lunch anytime.
If you want to do some extra yard work, I might have a house, you know? I know you like that. So thank you, Mayor and council members. Tonight, our organics task force and myself will be presenting to you our recommendations, the work that they have done over the course of the last year. So our Green Corps member, Rachel Lindholm, will be helping present. Our task force chair, Susan Rosenberg, will be helping present. And it's a lot of information. We sent out a lot beforehand. It's a lot of numbers. It's a lot of moving numbers. So anytime you have questions, let us know. Our goal is to try to present it so we can best inform you to make a decision on our June 11 council meeting. I'd just like to say again, thank you to our task force that have really gotten a lot of work done. We're excited to share it with you tonight. We're going to share a background of our county ordinance and mandate, talk about some of the work achieved. We're going to update you on our drop-off program, and then we'll offer some recommendations from the task force and then also from staff. And then we'll open it up to discussion and questions.
Good evening. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to start with the background of where the county and Richfield stand to give you a little bit of context. This is data from the MPCA, historically as well as current, showing the combined recycling rates. So this is single sort recycling as well as organics. And if you check out the far-right bar is 2017, it currently falls a little under 50% recycling. And there's a 2030 goal for the metro to hit 75%. So there's a big space for improvement, and a lot that needs to be done countywide and metrowide, actually. But this means that there's a lot of room for Richfield to grow as well. And one of the ways that Hennepin County has decided to help cities out is by revising their ordinance 13, which is a recycling ordinance with new mandates for regular single sort recycling and organics recycling. So that was that two-pager that was sent out in work session materials. And basically, briefly, it talks about business requirements as well as residential requirements, and they have different timelines. We're going to be focusing on the residential requirements tonight. The business ones are more on the county side regarding enforcement and carry out. So residentially, cities with a population of greater than 10,000 people will be required to offer curbside organics recycling through one of two options to residents by 2022. So we're starting that process now, because these things do take a while, obviously, to implement. So annual recycling rates in Hennepin County, this data is also from 2017. The yellow bar is where Richfield stands. So we are not doing the best, but this does mean, again, that there is a lot of room for improvement and a lot of easy room for improvement. So it's important to note that Richfield is one of two cities in Hennepin County that does not have organized single sort recycling. And this means lower participation in regular recycling, lower outreach from the city or from haulers, which can mean, you know, more contamination, things like that. So there are a few causes of why Richfield currently is about 39th in the county, but again, a lot of room for improvement. So this data is again from the MPCA, and it gives a bigger picture of past waste generation as well as future projected waste generation, also for the metro area. It's important to note that with that great increase in the forecast, a lot of population growth and increased waste generation means potential for more waste to be going to the landfill, which is exactly what we want to avoid. And this is pretty contextually relevant, because a lot of our waste in the county has been going to waste-to-energy facilities, so incinerators, which is more, it's better than the landfill, but obviously not the best as diverting it. However, the Hennepin Energy Recovery Center of the incinerator in Minneapolis by Target Field is currently at capacity, and Great River Energy in Elk River actually closed earlier this year. So waste-to-energy is not the, you know, stale or strong stalwart that it's been. And that means that we have to look into alternatives. The MPCA has said with these updates that landfilling rates will be climbing back to pre-recession levels. So we want to do more recycling, more organics. And then this is also just kind of a graphic representation of what I was just saying in that And then this is also just kind of a graphic representation of what I was just saying in that previous slide. The red bar is the landfill. So with, uh, GRE closing and HERC at capacity, that orange bar shrinks dramatically this year. And the red increases because landfilling is the easiest alternative. And even though landfilling decrease, is projected to decrease through 2030, where it is projected to end up at 2030 is still higher than what it was at last year. So it's increasing overall, which is obviously what we want to avoid. Um, and so the goal is to make the green and the blue, the organics and the recycling, uh, larger and the red smaller.
First of all, before I start, I'd just like to recognize our, our, some of our task force members came in tonight and really appreciate them coming tonight. And also, we've had a really good attendance and people are really serious about, uh, this subject. And, uh, so we, I'm glad to see that they're here supporting this. Um, just a, just this graphic just talks about, uh, what makes up our trash. You know, we've been doing a lot of trash talking lately. And so, um, but you can see that the highest percentage is the organics. And it's, uh, that's what we were looking at for, um, for this task force. And one thing that, that came out when doing some of our conversations is that almost all trash can be recycled. It just, we got to figure out how we're going to do this. We're just, we're just working with the organics right now. And so this graph just shows that. A little bit about this task force. Um, they've, we've been meeting monthly for about a year. And it, um, it was convened as an advisory to the city council and, uh, on matters relating to establishing the accessible organics collection in the city of Richfield. And as Rachel said, we were only one of two communities in the whole state county that didn't have this. So it was time for us to get on the ball and let's go. So part of our task was to choose the drop-off sites, which we do. And then also a really big part of this is to educate these res, our residents of why this is important. And so that, and that was another task that we, that we tackled. And so for, as far as for the, the, uh, drop-off, we have two. And one is at Hope Church on, right down the street on Portland. The other one is at Wood Lake Nature Center. And we, we chose those because of their kind of equidistance from, uh, in the community and so that people will have easy access to it. Also, we were looking for ways that are close to multi-housing. Another good thing that happened for the Hope site is that there is a loaves and fishes meal program there. And, uh, I have talked to the site coordinator there and he says that every night that they, um, they are disposing of seven to eight pounds of recyclable organic materials there. And they, they serve Monday through Thursday there.
So Amy's going to help me out with this slide. Um, it's a pretty cool interactive format that we have used to kind of see where everyone who's participating in the drop-off program is. Um, and it updates on a monthly or a month-to-month, um, you know, registration, uh, look. So you can see, uh, that 101 people or households actually registered in October, which was before the program even launched, which was very exciting to see. Everyone getting so excited and when's this coming, when's this coming? I'm like, okay, it's not coming for a while, but it is coming. And then obviously the explosion in November, 362 registrations. And it's been steady ever since. So it's nice to kind of see, um, this is all across Richfield. Uh, you know, every neighborhood, every little, you know, block radius, things like that. Um, it also does show us where in the future we can do more targeted outreach and have, you know, maybe block captains of households who are already registering, talk to their neighbors, things like that. So currently we have over 700 households registered, uh, which is very exciting. And this is especially exciting because if we take into account that more than one person lives in most households, this means that we have several thousand Richfield residents participating in this program. Um, and it's continuing to grow. So that's, uh, really nice to see for the task force that their work with outreach has paid off. And it's really nice to be able to show this with you.
And along that line, uh, oh, excuse me. I guess I jumped right in there with the comments.
So, uh, we, uh, when you register for the program, there's an opportunity to put comments or questions in. And so I wanted to highlight a few of these. Um, obviously, uh, if you had a chance to look at these slides, you can read them in depth. But the excitement is almost palpable, um, from residents who are excited that the city is promoting more sustainability initiatives. The top right larger comment is a resident who's participated in the county's zero waste challenge. Um, and now is excited to be able to put their education and experience into Richfield's own program. Um, you know, there are, there's feedback, like I wish recycling was picked up every week and trash every other week. Um, and people who, in their registration for the drop-off program have already started to mention curbside. So people are, are at different stages in their waste diversion journey. And this is just one of the ways that we are kind of seeing how residents are excited about this.
Well, I, as I, sorry, I interrupted you. But one of the bigger things, and I think those of us, those, uh, you folks on the council and those of us that have been on the council, we're always looking for these ways for community and for people to feel like they're a part of something larger. And I really saw, heard this through the comments, and Rachel alluded to those and some of the comments that she had, that, you know, people are really excited about doing this. Uh, it's kind of bringing some people together. We, I was at the farmer's markets and I, my personal conversations. I'm running into people who are just really excited about doing this. And they, it kind of leads to the bigger discussions of some of the environmental issues that we're all going to be facing. Uh, and so it, this is such a simple task to do, is no hardship whatsoever. I run over maybe two or three times a week to Wood Lake and put that in. And I'm pretty excited to do that. Tuesdays are a little rough because it, that's when I get it picked up. But it's really, it's really, um, it's really been a worthwhile thing. And it's really has helped me to kind of, um, grasp some of the, the larger environmental issues that are, that's facing all of us. So, um, anyway, I do think this has really been a worthwhile, uh, program, project. And there are lots of people that are really excited about it.
So, uh, additional community responses, we conducted a survey in December about a month after the program had started. And we wanted to know more about the residents who are participating, uh, what we could do to improve the program, what was going well, you know, a typical check-in survey. So these are a few of the responses on people who are saying, you know, why they were using the program and what was working well with them. Um, many have told me through the survey and actually just, you know, even stopping me at the dumpster actually to say, you know, we've decreased the size of our trash can at home or, um, you know, saved money by not purchasing disposable products. Or, you know, I've decided to start looking at zero waste behaviors. So it's really started to, you know, leave the organics drop-off program and really become part of many residents' lives, which is very exciting for, um, me to hear. And then they also tell me stories about how they've talked to their neighbors and gotten their neighbors to sign up or their friends or the family. And, um, one resident had just recently moved to Richfield and ended up signing up for the program. And in the comments, like you saw before, she wrote, I would have never known if my neighbors hadn't told me about this program. And I moved from Minneapolis where they have curbside organics. And she was really excited to know that she could continue, um, what she had been doing there. So again, uh, if you would like to read these, um, at a later point, they're all just saying these things over and over, which is exciting to hear that Richfield wants this. Susan?
Oh, so, guess I'm falling behind here. But this is, this is just a, um, some more of the, um, questions and answers that, uh, came up during the surveys and during our conversations. And then before this program, did you compost in the past three years? You can see that, uh, most people have never done it before. And so this really gave them a chance to, to do something and to, that they felt that they were making an impact. And it's, uh, and, and really good for, for their earth. And a lot of people, and then how often do you use the sites? Uh, and I, some of the people that I talked to, uh, do composting in their own, in their backyard. But they can't do a lot of the things that we can do with our, um, drop-offs. And so that was a big, uh, important factor. I know a lot of my garden club friends, they compost because obviously the good dirt is for, good for the gardens. But there's just a lot of things like bones and some of, um, the things that do not decompose very well that they can't do in their backyard. So they really did appreciate having this service.
I think it's also important to note that because the majority of people are using these sites once a week, it's really becoming a behavior and a habit. And, you know, it's a weekend errand or it's a on the way to work or, you know, things like that. So becoming part of a habit that if people are already willing to drive to Hope Church or Wood Lake, you know, having the accessibility of curbside at home, um, will incentivize people to do it even more. So then we've briefly mentioned community outreach. Um, the task force has tabled or, uh, interacted with residents at the summer farmer's market, the winter market at the community center, Lakewins Co-op, uh, House of Prayer, Wood Lake Lutheran, Hope Church. Um, and about in total, I think we've estimated that we've interacted with over 1,000 or 1,500 residents, um, which is very exciting. And then we see that in people who are registering and say, oh, the great presentation at Wood Lake. Um, thank you for coming to talk at House of Prayer, things like that. So really reaching people where they are in the community and, and their parts of Richfield has been really successful for us. So this is a brief, uh, summary of that more extensive table that was sent out in the pre-session materials. Um, but basically I wanted to go through options for next steps so that there, there's an understanding of, of kind of the two areas out there. And one, the first one is ordinance only, and the second one is organizing, uh, recycling and organics. And we chose these two because they're the most viable options for the time that we have and the resources, um, and some resident feedback as well. So ordinance only would be basically when haulers get licensed to pick up in the city, they would be required to offer organics, a curbside pickup to residents if requested. Um, organizing recycling and organics means that, you know, every resident in Richfield would have the same hauler picking up their recycling. And it could be the same hauler for their organics as well. Say Waste Management could do both, or it could be a different hauler for their organics, but everyone in Richfield would also have the, that hauler. And then if you, if we go down that route, there are a few options for how we would pursue that as well. But these are kind of the main, um, uh, paths. So they each have their own pros and cons and kind of the pros for one are the cons of the others, so to speak. Um, ordinance only, there, it's easier for, uh, residents and the city, there's less change. Um, however, this does mean that there could be less participation, um, with less outreach. Um, more trucks on the road because each hauler that is licensed would also be adding an organics truck. And I know that is definitely something that, uh, we're conscious of, safety and environmentally wise and economically in all the ways. Um, and then also, we don't know exactly how expensive it would be for residents. Obviously, it would be more expensive, most likely, than if more people are doing it. You would charge a higher fee because it's less convenient for the haulers. So that's, those are details to look into if that path is taken or chosen. Um, and then on the other side, the pros for organizing recycling and organics recycling. Most likely, there would be higher program participation because it is a citywide effort. Um, recycling, regular recycling is a little different because residents, um, have to do that. Um, organics, there would be an option, most likely. Um, and that gets into the staff recommendation that Amy will talk about later. Um, of course, there would be fewer trucks on the road, um, and they would be stopping more frequently. So it would be an increase in safety. So the cons, there could be a potential to have more than one hauler for all services as we do recommend that we would leave, uh, trash as is. So residents could choose their hauler for that. Um, and then the billing process, again, a detail to go into later. But if it's built through the city, I know we've been asked how, how do the costs appear? And so if it is built through the city, it could appear on a bigger utility bill, but residents would not be paying a separate hauler bill. So, um, costs and staffing for both, um, are not set in stone because it really does depend on the option and then a whole RFP process. Um, but it is pretty sure that a dedicated, uh, full-time employee recycling coordinator would be needed to oversee this process, um, no matter what option is taken and then report the data to the county, uh, interact with residents and provide that outreach, their county mandates or county requirements for educational events, um, and the like. So legally, it's currently unknown if anything would be needed besides changing the city ordinance for the first option. Um, but it's important to note that if organizing recycling and organics recycling, um, was chosen, that is the opinion of the city attorney, that we would not have to go through state statute procedure to organize hauling, um, the statute procedure that is required to organize trash, which is more extensive and, um, a lengthy process. So that's the opinion of the city attorney, which is, um, good news. And then other cities to kind of see where the rest of the county's at. Since this is such a new, uh, revision to the ordinance, most cities haven't, you know, done anything and publicized it yet. So there aren't any that have just done ordinance only that, um, the county is aware of. Uh, most cities that already have organics are organized for all three, trash recycling and organics. So they kind of are not what we're looking at. But Edina is open trash hauling and they are organized for recycling and will be organized for organics, um, starting next year. So they're kind of the one example that we can look at and, and talk to if that is the option that is pursued.
The, um, tax, task force had several discussions. And, and so the recommendation that has come down from the task force for this is to pursue organizing, organizing curbside organics recycling and single sort recycling for residents in the city. Initiate planning and outreach efforts immediately and ensure adequate ongoing staff support. Continue to fund the two organics recycling drop-off sites. And this was, this was, uh, partly because of the multi-housing units that ha, are using these. And we, we really want to continue that. Um, and then the city works with the county and resident volunteers to provide education and outreach to residents and haulers before, during, and after transition to curbside organics and recycling collection.
And next I would offer some staff recommendations. Uh, the first one is to fully support all four of the task force recommendations that Susan just listed. The second one is to offer organized hauling of recycling and organics with a subscription-based program for the organic, organics portion versus mandatory participation. And that's a decision, you know, you, you would just have to be thinking about, um, how the program would actually be rolled out. Um, there's some cities where it's mandatory. Um, at Edina, every single resident will pay for the service. Whether they do it, that is up to them, but they will pay for it. Um, the other option is subscription where, um, you have families opt in or households opt in, um, if they want to participate. A good example, um, of kind of a graduated step though, from subscription to mandatory is St. Louis Park. Uh, they started because there was a, a need in the community to offer organics recycling. There was a want there. Uh, they felt though, a lot of residents didn't know enough about it and we're going to have quite a bit of pushback if it was mandatory. So they offered subscription as a compromise and through just the course of several years, um, it was a lot like what we see with the organics drop-off, a lot of word of mouth, that their program got so popular, they just went to, to mandate it just recently. Um, so now everybody, um, you know, pays through the city to have recycling and organics.
Can I ask a clarification question? I understand that since we don't do organics, that you could have organized hauling for the organics. Currently, people have a variety of haulers for the recycling. Would that change then if you went to organized hauling of recycling as well?
Yeah, so what would happen is you would put a, you know, request out for proposals and multiple haulers would, you know, put a proposal. What we would do, I think, is what other cities have done and give hauler certain areas of the city. Like this, like east side of Richfield would be Waste Management, maybe central would be Dix. Like you would kind of separate it out. Um, there's some that have gone more uniform or the lowest one gets the majority of the, the participants.
And then as a follow-up, is be, is this going to be mandatory recycling because of the change in the county ordinance? Is that what prompted that to become mandatory?
So the recycling portion, the single sort recycling is actually a county thing. Currently residents, you're paying for recycling anyway. If you choose not to recycle, you're not fined or anything. Um, so it's not the city saying, or, or us recommending that single sort recycling is mandated. Um, that's just a county thing.
Another recommendation would be to explore the need for a future sustainability commission. And, you know, that could be graduated steps. It could be a committee within the Community Services Commission or in another, um, existing commission. But if there, um, you know, is a lot of work to be done. um existing commission but if there um you know is a lot of work to be done with residents and through residents whether it be with um organics, recycling uh water-related issues, energy-related issues depending on the city's goals um it may be you know helpful to have a sustainability commission in the future.
Doesn't Bloomington have one Amy? Uh a sustainability commission?
Yeah, yes they do.
Okay, is how is that part of another commission or not?
I think it's separate.
I think it's standalone.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's a little confusing um because the county has something called score funding um and how it works is the haulers when they bring materials to the landfill they pay a solid waste tax and that tax goes to the state of Minnesota and it goes into what's called score funding grants and there's kind of two baskets there's the recycling and there's the organics um each one kind of has its own rules and that's I think where it gets confusing but if we follow the track with recycling um it this about fifty percent next year of all score funding grants will be recycling and about fifty percent will go into organics so they're really pushing organics through the county they want um to incentivize mi- municipalities to to kind of push both to encourage both but with recycling um you can see the amount of grant money that the city of Richfield has received because Richfield is one of two cities that does not have organized recycling we only have ten percent of that total amount so like last year and we got seventy-two hundred dollars and typically that goes into Wood Lake Nature Center's um budgets to help them through the education component kind of go back into recycling education the rest of it gets divided up and goes to our residents quarterly on their um bill on their utility bill it's a credit back so they get about eight dollars and forty cents a year it's about two dollars and ten cents a quarter. Um if you go organize recycling the city would get all the money and um so the seventy-two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars such as last year would come back to the city and you know some of the things that that money can then be used for is education you can give it back to residents uh you can provide support staff with that money to help do the education and work to organize the program.
Okay um so I just want to point out that the reason why uh that money is um declining or has been declining is not because score funding is on its way out or or anything like that but it's because like Amy said that fifty percent recycling fifty percent organics it hasn't always been fifty-fifty it's been sixty, forty, seventy, thirty, etc. so more of it's going to organics so then also with curbside organics recycling the number of households that would participate is how um organic score funding gets determined so the more people you have or households you have participating the more score funding for organics the city gets so score funding is strong um and hopefully it'll keep increasing as depending on Action Council decides.
Um just to clarify the math here and maybe what you just said is what makes the difference it because if ninety percent of it funds eight dollars per household currently I believe some of the math you had put in the work was to give twenty-five dollars per household back and fund a staff position?
So so this stuff is just for single sort recycling the twenty-five dollars is what would come from the organics score funding that other pot that we don't even get right now um so that's where that twenty-five comes from and so the risk regular recycling is what can fund a position organics score funding it doesn't allow for administrative um funding.
Yep.
Yep.
So yeah that other basket of score funds your organics has a little more it's a little more restrictive in what you can use it for uh and that's where I would propose um if we do the organized hauling of organics um each resident can get up to twenty-five dollars per year and that we could what a lot of cities do is they give it back to residents in the form of a credit on their utility bill um and talking with a county uh gentleman who kind of oversees the program he says it's very common if if you have a lot of uh participation in cities that residents see that full twenty-five dollars come back and kind of looking at numbers um and what hu- the average household could look like if they opt into having curbside organics um they will all have it aligning with the county mandates they awful also have access to two organic drop-off locations um and that's nice as Rachel said for the multi-use families and also if you have where's the like a big party or something where you generate more food waste or more organics um you also have another site to put on their organics that are generated there'd be less trucks on roads uh the average monthly cost to organize recycling is three dollars and forty-five cents per household in the county and there is a range um it was anywhere from two dollars and sixty cents in some cities all the way up to seven dollars in I'm sorry four dollars and eighty cents um in talking with the county a lot of the higher numbers in Hennepin County represent cities that are very spread out or trucks have to travel farther their opinion is that Richfield would be on the very low end of the spectrum because of how um compact our city is and how our grid system is set up it'd be more efficient for trucks the average monthly cost of organized organics is five fifty a household in Hennepin County so the average total bill is about nine dollars a month for both services.
Uh in comparison before Bloomington organized they surveyed their residents on how much they were paying for regular recycling and they were paying nine dollars a month just for recycling total so.
Yeah. So kind of put some numbers with it what the cost would be and again if we have enough uh participation in the organics hauling each household would receive a twenty-five dollar credit through the score funds.
Which is about forty percent of the total cost annually.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Supple? So I had a question currently you know trash pickup is weekly and the recycling's picked up every other week when would would that continue and would the organics be weekly or every other week?
So that would be definitely a detail that would be ironed out in the RFP process um when Edina did their RFP for organics uh this past year they asked for um costs for picking up recycling every week and every other week and same for organics to kind of see where that would fall um and then they surveyed their residents and their residents decided you know we want to stick with recycling every other week so it'd be a of an RFP budget and public engagement kind of process to figure that out but both would probably be options.
Just a question since uh I know one of the reasons to keep the drop-off sites open is for um the like apartment buildings, multifamily homes um so they they wouldn't I guess and this maybe doesn't impact the decision but in an a system with organized recycling uh are multifamily units exempt from that and they still contract their own services?
Yeah so they are exempt per the county I believe it's up to four so like duplexes are included in residential and triplexes but up to four units and I think the rest are probably zoned commercially I'm not sure about that but their their services are um separate so they would not be required to have curbside they could opt into it and I've had some um places by Wood Lake ask me could we look into doing organics and could you help us out with that process and things like that so there is um interest and that's definitely an option if they want to pursue it but they're not required to do that and so we want to keep this for you know residents of those buildings who want to do organics but their building doesn't you know we want them to have an opportunity as well.
Okay because one one detail that might might not be relevant then but I was thinking about if our if our way to for the the twenty-five dollar credit for participants is through a utility bill just thinking about that many renters don't pay that utility bill but maybe paying for trash but maybe it becomes irrelevant if they're not able to sign up for curbside anyway.
It's a good thing to think about.
Yeah I did want to mention I kind of glossed over it when we were talking about score funding that the recommendation um would be to also fund a sustainability coordinator position through the recycling score grant and other existing funds I feel like with you know program this big that would be citywide uh we would need that support um for doing outreach, education of course organizing with haulers and also be a liaison to schools and the business community um for information and and education uh we also would like a more robust website with information for residents, communications um all that stuff would need to be staffed. Yeah so open it up to questions, discussion.
Questions, comments? Councilmember Supple? I would just like to say thank you to the task force because it looks like we've done a lot of work here and have come a long way and people seem very excited about it.
They are and it it has been a really learning experience. I know uh Maureen Sky and I are from the League of Women Voters and we we have looked at organized trash hauling for but this is not part of that but anyway we've learned a lot and I have personally learned so much because so many of our members are master composters and and master recyclers that I really didn't even know that existed but we have learned a lot from that and so through that education we've been able to work with the public um when we've been out in farmers markets or whatever so uh yeah it has been a lot of hard work but it's also been some really good work and um has really opened um people's conversation about the needs for environmental um projects and targets.
Well it it was pretty um it grabbed my attention when it said thirty-two percent of the solid waste was organics because that's a lot we can keep out of the landfills.
That's right and since I've been recycling plastic bags at home you know you can drop them at your food stores.
Yeah don't put them in your curbside recycling.
Cub and lons I can't believe how much plastic that comes through my you know my house and and how much I can you know it's just a very easy way just to dump that over at lons or cub or wherever uh the organics how much and how much difference it has made in my household's trash every week when just by being much more conscientious about that and they're just the two of us in our household but it's just um it's just incredible the amount of waste and that's that's the kind of things that has really opened my eyes personally and I'm able to communicate that when I'm out talking just I just ask people to try it for a couple of weeks just collect your plastic bags just collect your your food scraps and just see what a difference that makes and I think people that have to be convinced I think this type of thing really has opened their eyes and and made things makes a big difference so.
I would add to um you're working at Wood Lake for so many years it's a big part of the education that we do there is we talk about recycling and composting I know one of the slides had comments and one of them said my my kids are so excited and to be able to teach kids this is the behavior that that we need moving forward with all the environmental challenges we have and will have and to have that option in your home um to follow through with that behavioral change and action I think is really important um and it's something the you know children do in schools uh our businesses will be mandated to do it next year um so it it's really exciting to see the work that's being done in the forward motion we have with it.
And I just would like to say now piggybacking off of what Amy said we've also introduced it farmers markets are included in the businesses and organizations that the county wants to have organics so we started that this summer actually um and it's been really nice to see so far and people have started to gravitate towards it uh customers and vendors so that's nice to see but I did have two other points just for your consideration quickly um so back here where we I was talking about how much uh waste will be going to the landfill obviously we want to avoid this for environmental reasons but economically as well uh the county is considering increasing their tip fees so when a truck goes to the dump they have to pay a tip fee um and they're considering increasing them by more than their usual amount uh which the cost goes back to the hauler who passes the cost back onto residents so um that's another added economic charge um to waste disposal in the near future so it's really incentivizing organics and recycling which pay lower or no tip fees um and are not subject to the municipal solid waste tax that Amy was talking about um and then I know finances are really uh important considerations so like I was saying with the nine dollars a month um charge and then the twenty-five dollar a year kind of reimbursement credit um we're also hypothetically it's not for sure but you know when people do this program like I said they're cutting down on the size of their trash can so they're paying less for trash um and we would hope that that would be a widespread um not phenomenon but thing that residents in Richfield would um experience and so they would save money on their trash every month and that money could go towards paying for organics and they would also hopefully be sa- saving through organized recycling um because a negotiated contract would produce a rate le- lesser than what they're currently paying so hopefully it all would even out and again that would be something that we would look at in the in a future RFP process so.
Councilmember Garcia?
Well, one thing that's really positive there's a lot of positives here you know one of them is that kids learn about organic and um and they make sure their parents participate because they know the contributions that they're making to the environment and you you know and when your kids get involved and you're and get you involved it's it's really a big you know a big help the other thing I was going to say is you know um when organized uh garbage came about I think it came about because of the League of Women Voters they started the dialogue and they started to s- s- you know they they study all these issues all the time and and they're the ones that started the issue started the dialogue started to spread the word and got more and more folks involved to the point where you know uh finally the Community Services Commission started talking about it and and other commissions did too and and you know it just par- sparked um a real interest uh on the environmental side of this but what what makes me feel good I think it's the the fact that it has been so positively received and I think people are just desperate to be contributors and making building something and and getting results and and you know because you know we don't want to go to hell in a breadbasket and I'm only and I'm only saying that because you know sometimes you say ah jeez you know.
But it's easy to do and I think that's that's the beauty of it um it isn't a hardship it's not and it's in um it's and then it is is a contribution and I think that's that's the message that I have heard it's something that people can do and they can do it very easily.
Right.
And if you got kids yeah you're right kids will sometimes lead the way with you know elementary because they're learning that in school and they're learning the ne- need for doing that so.
I just love the the positive aspect of this because it's a win-win it is like Rachel pointed out it is a win-win situation. Yeah. And thank you all all of you for your work and also the and also the committee.
They've been they've been very loyal and and very you know really the conversations have really been good discussions.
I would like to say I was the council liaison um to the task force committee and I'd like to say thank you so much to to all the members on the task force but they really I mean did their homework explored all different options we have master composters, master gardeners, recyclers in the group um people who really care and have been doing a lot of work for years um in making our community more sustainable and green and they did their homework and a ton of outreach and um provided a lot of support and Rachel has done an excellent job also I was just thinking um because this your position is a a Green Corps?
Corps, yep, it's a service year so.
That's that's absolutely amazing I mean I think you've also gone above and beyond and thank you to Amy and thank you to Jim Toppitsoffer who helped start the group as well and to Susan for chairing it um but the group itself has just been uh has gone above and beyond so so thank you so much for that and I you know I think that connects to the point of I really hope we do have a sustainability commission I think it's something we absolutely need um and I know that there's so many things that the city needs and sometimes resources and staffing and and a lot of other things can can maybe not make it as easy to do but I hope we do consider um making that a reality and I know we've been doing a lot of stuff with our landscaping with our parks with our solar panels with our water treatment so we're on that path but a commission and a plan and um how people can move forward when I was um door knocking for city council and When I was, um, door knocking for city council and for mayor, that was an issue that was so prominent in a lot of conversations that I had, and I was kind of surprised, um, because I was thinking more, you know, roads and, and different types of, of things. But people really do care about the environment. They really do want a walkable, bikeable, beautiful place to be in, great air to breathe, good water to drink. Um, so I think this is just testament also to that need. There's need, there's an interest there. Um, I had a question about why are we one of two cities in the county? Like, what is the historical piece? Why did that happen?
So when organized, not organized, but when like single sort, regular recycling, it has a variety of names, single sort, regular, conventional, et cetera, but when non-organics recycling really became a thing in like 70s and 80s, most cities who adopted it citywide just started organized. They never started with like an open system, so they never had to switch to organized. So Richfield started with, well, and still has, the, the open system. Um, and most cities, if they did start with an open, had like transitioned mostly by the 90s. Um, I don't know why Richfield has stayed. I don't know, Eden Prairie's the other one. I don't know why they've stayed. But yeah, it's, you know, one of two, so.
Thank you. And then I have another question. So for a city the size of Richfield, what, how would we make a decision in terms of organizing with one hauler for recycling versus multiple? I feel because of the grid system, because of our size, what would be the difference?
Yeah, so the consortium approach, that's where, you know, for my opinion would be, well, we have to take into account the city size. It's, Richfield is a smaller city. It's not like, you know, we're dividing Minneapolis or even we're dividing Bloomington or things like that. It's a smaller city, so it honestly would also be up to the haulers. They might, you know, talk, talk amongst themselves and say, you know, Richfield's such a small city, we're all gonna bid, and whoever gets it, gets it, or they might be more willing to divide it. Um, but that would be a going out again for the RFP. I think it would be included in that process.
Would we decide if it's kind of a, they could submit both type of proposals or it would, we would pick upfront?
Yeah, I don't know. I think, I'm, I don't have RFP background, so I don't, I don't know for sure how that would work. Um, I think, I mean, you can always ask for whatever and, and they can submit bids or they can not submit bids, but that would be something to probably talk about with staff.
City, oh, do you have something, city manager? Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think that the best course would be to engage with the haulers first and do some information collecting, and then we, we build from that an RFP process and then look at it and build the details in, but we can update you along the way.
Great, and Maureen has a question or comment?
I just, since I know I'm not, did that whole HCA report that from 2009. I can say from all the tools I've had watching other cities go organic, up until Linda Slocum's bill, those cities would save the most money for their residents by going to a bid process with one winner. That comes, that supplies the lowest bid. Whereas if the companies get together and set their own rates, that's not going to get as low as if you open it up for a one, I mean, a one winner.
So I guess, yeah, that would be something I just want to learn more about in the way we set it up, um, for our community, given the fact that we are a small city on a grid. Um, and then this may or may not apply too much, because their Edina is mandating organics collection for all of their residents, but since they just transitioned, if there's any learning lessons, maybe on communication or anything like that with, from them, um, I, I personally am in favor of going the organ, uh, organized recycling and organics together. I think it's long overdue, um, and is a good option for our residents. And then the last piece I would say is I just think communicating, clear communication with our residents is very important and making sure we really think that through. So maybe it's a full sheet that goes in the utility bill that says, did you know Richfield is one of two cities that doesn't have or, you know, organized recycling? Did you know that we score the lowest on this and that? Because that type of information is important. We're way behind in why? Um, did you know that people are interested and excited and we've piloted this program with great success? Do you know that the majority of what goes in our landfill is organics? And because of these things, you know, starting this date, um, here's what it means for you, because it will be added to the utility and, and kind of some of, again, not a huge big novel where it's confusing, but I do think it will warrant some really clear, um, communication with residents, because it will be confusing to some.
Councilmember Wayland?
Yeah, I, um, want to echo everyone's thanks to the, uh, um, task force for their work on this. Um, I personally, even, uh, being the newest council member, I hear regularly and continue to hear regularly, um, unprompted that this is an issue people bring up, that they specifically wanting to see less, uh, less garbage trucks on the streets. And so I think this is a, a step towards that. Personally, I, I think, um, based on what I've heard from people, I think, uh, I think a lot of residents are ready to start talking, uh, like what does organized trash look like? Um, and so I think this is a step in the right direction, especially, um, as, uh, as our mayor said, that, that we're one of two cities that aren't doing this in the whole county. Um, and so I think that's, uh, we're, we're moving in the right direction. I appreciate that the, the task force has done so much research, uh, to get us to this point, um, and Rachel as well, um, and, and just all this, the staff time that's gone into this. I think, um, I'm really excited about this. The one question I had, um, and I, given, given my mindset that I, I think, I see this as one step of many in, in a process that I want to see us keep moving toward. Um, I did have, so I had talked with, uh, Director Markle beforehand about kind of the, the decision to recommend subscription at first rather than mandatory. Um, and I, I do understand, kind of especially the St. Louis Park example was, was helpful, um, why we would do that. I guess my one question, um, just to clarify, the costs, the cost averages you looked at, where it, um, would be about $9, um, a month combined, uh, recycling and organics, is that, um, from, was that a combined average of cities doing subscription and mandatory? Cause as I understand it, mandatory, I mean, obviously much more, many more people would be paying it, so the cost per person is generally lower?
Uh, Ben, yeah, Councilmember Wayland, I believe that they are combined, but it, it does get a little tricky, because some cities are subscription, but most are mandatory, um, whereas everyone pays, but you opted to participate. Um, and since that, most of those that are mandatory have organized trash recycling and organics. They see a lower charge, um, in all, so it's, you know, less of a, you know, solid waste charge. Um, but they are combined. It's not subscription or mandatory.
Okay, and so, so some of this, um, I think the other reason to take a sort of stepwise approach, rather than trying to jump to it all at once, is, is part of this, we don't know yet exactly what the costs might be. We're going on kind of averages and estimates.
Yep, and other cities, so like I said, Edina, which is, um, mandatory organics, but open trashes, will be, uh, $5.50 a month next year for residents. Robbinsdale just added organics, and they're at $6 a month, but they're organized for everything. So it kind of, uh, hovers around there.
Okay.
It's really unique to each city too, like how it's laid out, um, and, and what their best rate is to get back from the haulers. Um, but one thing I wanted to add to with, um, the mayor's comments is that there are so many other cities doing it. We have so much opportunity to learn from the other cities, like what not to do and what to do. Um, and we were able a few weeks ago to go to a meeting set up with the city of Bloomington that Edina was present at, and they did a really nice presentation about how, um, their organized hauling has gone and, and kind of the do's and don'ts, and Edina, um, was able to provide more information to about their program. So I think moving forward, we'll have a good network of other cities to lean on.
Yeah, great.
Good to know, as Rachel stated before, uh, Councilmember Wayland, with the subscription base, that cost would be higher for individuals that were participating. Didn't have the opportunity to educate the, you know, the revenue on the program itself. So it just be largely probably a slow process to have to do that, and cost would be higher. And that might be some, uh, and considered to do organics, to, with that too. So please keep that in mind to the baby steps with subscription base and the steps we're working on.
Thank you.
I think with a lot of the, the baby steps, uh, we're considering that the city doesn't have organized anything, and to go from nothing to, you know, you are mandated to do this, it would, it would, might be really harsh to residents. So that graduated approach might seem a little more seamless, I think.
Also for timeline purposes, since this mandate from the county for residents has to go into effect by the beginning of 2022, if we went zero to 60 essentially, um, there wouldn't be enough time to organize trash, sorry.
When we look at the graduated steps, I, I am not envisioning, for me, the goal would be to get to the mandated, you know, organics as well, but, and I don't see the timeline necessarily being many, many years, um, but I, I do see the reasoning behind it.
Councilmember Wayland?
Have we, um, have we asked? I guess have we gotten, I mean, short of, uh, a citywide survey or something, um, which is not inexpensive, um, I don't know how we would do this, but have we, have we asked people if they're, if they're ready for this, or have we sort of assumed, kind of based on where we've been, um, what amount of change in this specific area that people are open to?
Oh, Susan, you please go.
Yeah, Councilmember Wayland, um, uh, yeah, we have, we, the League of Women Voters has been at several community functions, particularly Penn Fest, with a cer- with, we've had petitions and we've, we've had materials where we've been able to do some one-on-one talking to people, and we've had several. I'm sure Maureen still has scads of paper at her house with signatures, the people that are in support of that. Uh, we've had our naysayers too, and we've had to kind of discuss that. I know Mary's been at our booths too, but that's probably, I don't know of any other organization has done it. I know we have really been out there for several years at, at community events, talking, uh, to people one-on-one, and then we, we do have petitions. So it's been fair, it's been pretty overwhelmingly is positive. Fifty, oh, 50 to one? Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm deciding that, it's quite a lot. Um, I probably maybe got one or two in the list, people signing up and hooked to 100, so.
Interesting. So there has been, that's the ma- that's the major, uh, push that has been. The city hasn't done anything, but we have, and we've been, we have communicated it to various, uh, people.
And I should say, we would have been more aggressive, if we were ready to really get aggressive, including door-to-door. But with the constant special elections, that, you know, candidates kind of shied away.
Well, yeah.
So, um, that was the reason why we didn't get more aggressive.
Thank you. I'm, uh, uh, city manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we record the work sessions, so if, uh, task force members want to come up and speak into the microphones and introduce themselves in, in the future, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions? Councilmember Wayland?
I guess as we finish, I was just curious, since we've got, what is it, seven recommendations here? Um, some of them seem fairly, uh, obvious in how they'd be combined and such, but can you just say a little bit to kind of next steps and timeline and how many of these will be coming as a combined package or whether they'll be separate pieces?
Yeah, I think for the June 11th, uh, council session, we would like to see a vote on whether the council would like to go down the direction of, um, ordinance only, or they'd like organized recycling and organics. I think the other thing that would be, um, important for us in our budget period right now is if we want to attach, um, some of our existing funds to a sustainability coordinator position, um, that could help get this work going as soon as possible. I think those would be, um, yeah, I think a lot of it's, you know, tied in there though, like the score funding would go with the organics. Um, and the sustainability commission, that's something we can explore down the road. But I think immediately would be just a direction with, with how they would like to fulfill that mandate.
Other questions or comments from council members? Great, thank you. Oh, and city manager Rodriguez, no problem.
Um, I just want to, uh, say that we're not going to come with a recommendation on June 11th to explore a sustainability commission. We feel like we've gotten some consensus here, and we'll come to you at a future date with details on that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Great job. We're excited. We got done pretty early. Thank you to all the commission members, to the task force members.